All right, so we need to order. Michelle, roll call, please.
Steve Herron.
Here.
And Woodman's first exit. Jean Agaral will be late. Nicole Jacobs. Carol Loncomb.
Here.
All right, if you'd please join me for questions, agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is approval of the agenda. I entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed say aye. Carry. Next agenda item is public forum. Doesn't look like anybody is here to speak, any written comments? Okay. Item number four, city announcements. Living on Joke Day?
I have, we have Joke Day coming up, May 12th. So, yeah, so we have the flights paid for Friday before.
And Friday before is the day where it can start putting stuff out?
Correct.
Okay, right. Anything else? There you go. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. All items enacted by motion unless a council member wants to remove an item. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed say aye. Carry. All right, item number six is our fiscal year '26 budget. Public hearing tonight that was announced and published. So I will open the public hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2025, June 30th, 2026, when is fiscal year '26? Anybody here to speak? Any emails?
No.
I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for our fiscal '26 budget.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for '26 budget.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please, Michelle.
Steve Herron.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Carol Loncomb.
Aye.
Our item 6B is now motion to approve the resolution approving the fiscal year '26 budget. Is that resolution adopted, I believe, right?
Yeah, it's on the back of the public hearing. Should be page 10.
So I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution. And the resolution could be in the last paragraph, then now therefore be resolved.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the annual budget for fiscal year '25, '26. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Polina, Iowa, that they hereby approve the budget for the '25, '26 fiscal year. The city clerk is directed to certify the necessary tax levying to the O'Brien County auditors and the O'Brien County Board of Supervisors and to submit the budget as adopted and the tax certificate to the Iowa Department of Management and the county auditor on or before April 30th, 2025, as required by law.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Michelle.
Steve Herron.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Carol Loncomb.
Aye.
All right, our next agenda item is the fiscal '24, '25 budget amendments. I will open the public hearing. Any input, Michelle, from?
No.
Nobody here to speak to that. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call vote to close the public hearing.
Steve Herron.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Carol Loncomb.
Aye.
Okay, the next agenda item is a motion to approve the resolution approving the fiscal year '25 budget amendments. Yes, that's the hearing.
12, that's 11.
I'll present that resolution adopting the fiscal year 2024, '25 city of Polina budget amendment. Whereas the city of Polina, Iowa, has published the proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 city budget amendment and has conducted the public hearing as required by the Iowa code, therefore be it resolved by the Polina City Council that the fiscal year 2024, 2025 city budget amendment is hereby adopted.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Carol Loncomb.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Steve Herron.
Aye.
Okay. Now, our next agenda item under that same topic is a motion to approve a resolution approving transfers, which is on page 13 of your packet, 13 and 14.
Resolution to transfer funds for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Whereas the city of Polina, Iowa, has identified the need for a budget amendment to reallocate funds to better align with the city of Polina budgetary needs. And whereas budgetary transfers are necessary to ensure adequate funding for the current fiscal year, be it resolved by the council of the city of Polina, Iowa, the city clerk is hereby authorized to transfer the following funds.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Does anybody have any questions on how we edit?
I'd like to hear you just say it, how you did it, I mean, on those amendments. I mean, I could smooth it, but, because you're moving this.
Right. If you look at the amendment, it looks like we did like 7.7 million, but it's not. It accounts every forward, like, so you're transferring from here to here. So it counts twice, here to here.
Okay.
So it looks bigger than, yeah.
Okay.
And I guess the best way just to explain is a switch gear, had it budgeted in the wrong fund. It was budgeted in a capital fund in electric. But we made it its own fund, so we needed to move from proprietary fund to a capital project. So then the funds were transferred that way, and the transfers hadn't been done from the lost and the TIP in past years. So that's when you could do this for that, okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, summary vote, roll call, please.
Steve Herron.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Carol Loncomb.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thanks for all the work, and then make sure to thank Marlene for all her help. I don't agree, people for pets, Michelle.
Okay, Jenna was actually supposed to be here in Chaco this morning and could not make it. So, what, I'll read through this email. She says, hi, she says, here are some thoughts and information we are needing to get the show on the road. It's going to be a long process, but we are determined to get it done with the people of Polina's help. I know Brooke sent some information, which I'll, there's some websites that I'll send to you guys in regards to how the TNR works. She plans, Jenna plans on making some flyers and brochures that we can keep in City Hall in Cassa River, yeah. Volunteers are needed. She said that she would like to see us come up with the TNR committee, she can help get this set up. It's going to be important to have our community with helping currently and then having someone to go in and do a future if more TNR is needed, needs to be implemented. They also want the talent to come up with volunteers to help with feeding, trapping, and transporting in the Sioux Center. We've been knew the volunteers' names and availability to enable to schedule, to get a schedule going. And location, they need to know where the colonies are, and that's what.
They do know?
Huh?
They need to know.
They need to know.
Okay.
So I handed this out, that she had sent.
Oh, that's that cat colony.
We have to, they have to start in one area at a time to make sure that they're getting everything and things not get confused.
I can imagine.
So we're going to have to set up some sort of committee and.
And I think people who have cats that they are definitely letting them out, they need to have a collar or something, so they don't get picked up.
Yeah, someone's, someone's spade female is missing.
Yeah, you had said that, so.
But no trapping started, so.
So it just did something, or got hit maybe, who knows? But no, I.
So the recommendation is to come up with a TNR committee.
Correct.
Any thoughts on that? Have any people contacted you on cat issues? That would be good to get back, you don't need to say the names, but.
I mean, I suppose.
They might be a good starting point to help us with the problem.
So they know where their need to go?
Yeah.
To start trapping.
So, did you say Isaac Green? I mean, should.
She didn't really say, no.
It'd be not, you know, maybe what we can do is each council member, and myself, we're going to, see if we can get a volunteer, so we come up with five or six volunteers, and then let Michelle know who those people are and.
No, I hope with as many complaints as we receive, there are people in Polina that are willing to also help.
Help solve problems.
Yeah, that's it, I feel that too. The ones that have complained, now if they don't help at all, then we're kind of.
And people for pets is still determined that it won't cost the same, they're determined to get everything.
Paid for.
Paid for.
That's a lot, though.
It is. Boy, I know, and we.
It's a, it's a pretty nice service, but I think that there should be some sort of.
You should have some flyers.
Could you keep track of TNR committee responsibility? Maybe one of the things is that, if we can get them together, would be, you know, doing fundraising, you know, doesn't have to be hardcore fundraising, but just let people know that it does cost somebody, and if we could participate in that as residents.
Yeah, and how they're going to do that otherwise.
Might be something we put out in the next newsletter, just a little snippet in there.
Well, maybe if we can get a committee together, I know with Gemberi coming up, we're always looking to delegate some of those fundraisers, like the pie and ice cream, something like that. All those pies are donated, ice cream is donated by Wells, so it'd be pure profit, you just need to be able to man it. So something to look into.
Yeah, spread the word.
Right.
Okay. So any other information? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve moving forward with the TNR program as noted on our agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve, sorry, let me look at the, the TNR program.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Those all in favor say aye.
Can I?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye.
Sorry, aye.
You're on the.
I, I'm sorry, I just heard you, aye, yes.
You're on, you're on approved.
You made the motion.
Oh, yeah. We don't want you to be against it. I just didn't say anything, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Mary, did you have a comment on?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know, I was talking with some auto repair folks in Sheldon last week, and Sheldon went on to clean out the stray cats thing, and what the automotive people are finding is that rabbits and rodents are getting in and chewing wires and things because there's no prey, no predators. Just.
And she did say too, that it is necessary to release them, though, too, although it is a problem, there needs to be a release.
As she said, that they will relocate some of them, but they mentioned that you want to have some level of non-breeding cat population for those reasons, probably. Okay. Next agenda item is power outages. We have information, NIFCO has requested a couple dates, power outages, not necessary on those dates, but that's their requested dates, we talked a little bit about that, or just.
I mean, those are the dates that would work for them best. I know he's got crews tend, crews tentatively, I mean, scheduled to work those days, and they'll be working the day after, put the power on, building line and whatnot. And I talked to Ron, who has to do some more, which we would have had to take another outage for our substation, and I talked to him, and he plans on doing his, the outage he would have had to take at the same time as this one.
Okay, so you won't have to have another one, then? That's good.
Yeah.
Well, I'd rather see it done now and get it done, rather than now, there's, kids aren't in school and stuff, so, I know it's night, but there's probably baseball, softball, but not schools.
Supposedly not at 11:00 PM, though.
I think 11 to 3:00 PM or 3:00 AM.
I think that's a perfect time.
And it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, and it's.
Into Thursday, yeah, yeah, both days.
It's not hot out yet, it's.
No, no, shouldn't be, hope.
It is Iowa, but.
And they don't care if it rains or whatever, they can still get everything done.
I'll make a motion to approve the July NIFCO power outage dates and times.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry.
And then we'll get, I think I need to get better information out to the public for, because we, we will, none of that work that'll be for those outages will be on us, that'll be NIFCO's outage, but we probably will be around town doing, doing stuff just to.
Even that night.
Yep. Just because the power's out and it's a lot easier to do work.
Yeah. Right, you don't have to worry about electricity.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think too, just put it out there so people know that you aren't there, but you will be.
Lots of communication, great things.
Yeah, I think so, too. So they don't wonder.
Right.
Okay. Next agenda item is garbage bids. Michelle, you want to review those with us, please?
Yeah, I just want to make a correction, on 10B, it says motion to approve garbage contracts, it's not garbage contract, it's a bid.
Oh, true bid, that's a bid.
Yeah, when I called OC sanitation, they just sent me the same thing they had sent before.
Oh, so you're thinking contract.
Yeah, so theirs was a contract.
Right.
But he said that that's, it's still the same, everything's the same.
Okay.
A few things, if we go with OC sanitation, we won't have to raise rates again?
Figured that.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like that's something we necessarily want to do or have to do if we have another bid that will work.
And I will say that Town and Country is very, I mean, when we cleaned out the clinic, we didn't have to pay for dumpsters, but I mean, we just had to pay for the tonnage in dumpsters, and like, the same with, we reshingled the concession stand at the ballpark, that was another deal where they just said, if there's a dumpster there, use it, and so I mean, in that aspect, they're.
That's a plus.
I think your new, the new owner is kind of working good with you guys.
Yeah, she's been really good.
So. But yeah, but only you go from $18 per resident to the other one, option two or one, like you said, we'll have to raise.
Second, all right. So if the council leans towards Town and Country, which is, I think, your recommendation, Michelle, right?
I agree with you, I agree.
Then, yeah, and why, you know, there's another reason, too. So then it'd be looking at option one or option two, could you explain the two differences?
So, option one, we would still, it's just like it is now, and we have to bill for extra yardage and.
For commercial.
For commercial. And that's, I mean, it's, it's not ideal. Because you could take a dumpster full of cardboard that's full, and a dumpster full of lead that's full, and if the dumpster's full, it's full.
Yeah, yes, yep.
So it's not ideal. Option two, they would charge commercial a little more, but we wouldn't have that, we wouldn't have to figure out that tonnage anymore.
Well, I just think it'd be great, I'm sure, an extra thing off your table that you don't have to do, and.
And then that would reduce the expense to the homeowner also, right, on option two?
Yeah. You know, we do have problems with people putting stuff in other commercials, garbage and.
Sure, they always have, always have. Even country people.
That's right.
No, I think too, and, you know, the regular rule, to take all of our garbage cans and recycling and then put all new in is going to be.
Yeah, if we don't need to.
If we don't need to, if we can make this work, I think we should. And how long was this one going to go for?
This was just a bid, I mean, usually they just go out.
Yeah.
I don't know, they buy yours the one time, but I think I was.
But there were, but there were increases built into that, I think, too, right?
Because I thought, what did you say, how long?
Yeah, Orange City's would have been.
Orange City's did.
So we could, you know, the council could approve Town, the Town, the Town and Country bid, option one or two, whichever you prefer, and then Michelle could request from them a contract, and then they would approve the contract as a meeting.
Okay.
So if you're.
So it says current prices, they're currently charging $10.38 for home, for the homeowners, correct?
Correct, I'd have to look at the contract a little bit.
Okay.
Sounds about right, though, with that, and then there's the extra couple bucks.
So that $10.38 becomes 11 under option two.
Yeah.
Right.
And $2 is going to be.
It's a little bit of an increase, but not much.
Not much, no.
Not what it would be for the other.
I like the idea of having, not having to, for us to bill the commercial dumpsters.
Yeah, I do, too, I think that would be a big plus.
And we don't really have any information to do a good job with it.
Right.
Right, and then you don't know.
Um, for example, like the elevator, and it's the same example Michelle gave, a lot of times this time of year, we'll have seed bags in the dumpster, and that's it. It doesn't weigh anything.
Right.
But then there's times where we'll have a lot of heavy stuff in it.
Sure.
So.
Of course, option two, they say they'll charge per yard and not per weight.
Yeah.
Make sure your seed bags are flattened.
Flattened out.
Packed out.
You want to put more on top of them.
Can you recycle them?
I don't know.
No. It depends. It depends if they're, yeah, it just depends.
One of the things that if we would go in with Town and Country, either of these, they have per home, option one, option two, one of the things that we, as the council, the council just did recently on our garbage rates, it was not so much per home, it was pretty much that, but if a commercial account had a blue dumpster like a home, it classified as home, so we would want to clarify that, make sure that.
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
And then it's just once a week, blue dumpster, instead of twice a week, big dumpster.
And then if they want more than one dumpster, they have to let you know, right, Michelle? So then they get charged per each one, right? Yep.
Okay, go in your packet, page 21, because I'm about to make a.
Thank you, Steve. Do you know how much it is to rent a dumpster from them?
I know.
Oh, a commercial dumpster?
Mm-hmm, like a, like a recycling one?
Oh, like a bid, you mean a gray bin or a dumpster?
A dumpster.
Dumpster.
Mm-hmm.
We just, we usually just direct them to Town and Country.
Okay.
So on that Town and Country, that first page, that page on to your left hand.
Yep.
That page, I'd make a motion to approve Town and Country's disposal of option two.
Their bid.
Their bid.
Or their bid.
Their bid.
For option two.
I will second that bid, or that motion, I should say, for that bid.
End of the discussion? Hearing none, summary vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry. Okay. Item number 11, nuisance violations. First one is a motion to move forward with attorney's recommendation for the property at 313 East Broadway. Michelle, do you have anything to?
I had, I spoke with Malanda, and he was going, he was okay at first with us going in there with a couple, a few representatives, and then he had called me and said that he didn't want to do that anymore. And I did speak with Thor briefly about what, about the thoughts with that, and he didn't think that was even a really good idea, because you don't have a contractor with you and.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
So we still would have, we wouldn't have done anything, we still would have had to have a contractor go in there, and so it was.
Actually, so doing double, and, okay.
So Thor's recommending not to do that?
Not just us, not just that, it's like a.
More representatives. I did talk to public health this morning, I don't know, and the gal got back to me, and they do have, she did not know, but she called an older public health people that have done it for a while, and they do have, it's kind of like, they call it a nuisance, but they do have people that will go in and check. She didn't know for sure if there was any fees on that, but they would look to see if it's habitable at all. So, means you've got Thor working already, I think we'll just leave this all alone, but I think if we have to do it again, we should at least check into them, see what we're looking at.
Would that be doubling up on, on those efforts, though? Kind of like what we're.
Well, that's what I'm finding out, I don't think that they will need the attorney, that's what I was.
Okay, I get it.
Do one or the other.
Yeah, well, both. And I just remembered, they talked about it when I worked there, I don't remember them doing it, going in home, but then a lot of times it was for children.
Then they would still probably have to get an attorney involved.
I don't know, and she wasn't for sure either, but I think it's something we could at least check into, but like I said, we've got him working on this, and.
So maybe we can touch base with Thor on that.
And he might know the answer to those, too.
And if you look at page 24, I put some asterisks by what Thor had recommended initially. And I, Malanda is here, and I did say, I did tell him he would have time to speak with the council.
Were you there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you stand up there, you're like.
We have a podium up there, don't we?
Pretty fancy. We should see him build it, when all that junk was laying there, I go, what is this?
Yeah, so if you go there, that way we can hear you.
Yeah. You didn't get by the first one to use it. Yeah, you're the first one to use it, so.
The reason, the reason why, I mean, I came today, because I spoke with Michelle, I mean, a few, a few times, and on, I mean, the last meeting, I was here, it was that the city council can come in, it was the attorney's, the city attorney's recommendation. And I called, because what I had asked was just, I mean, water, in the way that I can get that place to be nice and livable inside. And I called the city attorney, they said that, no, we did not recommend that. And also, the other things they told me, they asked that, okay, do you have an account with that? Are you behind your bills? I say, no, I'm not behind my bills. What had happened is that, I mean, I had a leak, my pipe was having a leak, and I had to save some money for them to change the whole things. And they say, no, I mean, we didn't recommend that, you have to go back to talk to the city. That's why I had called back in, Michelle, and Michelle told me that, no, it wasn't a recommendation from the attorney, and it was just that, I mean, we can go in if. a recommendation from the attorney and it was just that, I mean, we can go in, if we can go in. I told Michelle that, Kelly, I don't have any problem, I mean, they can come in, I don't have any problem. It's just that, I mean, when the city want to come in, in somebody's house, you know, they can, I mean, I could just stop, they could, Kelly, I mean, I talked to Kelly way back, and I never refused nobody to come in my house. I never refused. It was just that, I mean, the way it was, it was, that's, no, the attorney says, that is where I say that, no, I called the attorney, they say that, no, it wasn't that. And then today, I just said, no, I mean, as the discussion comes, that, no, the contractor to come in, I don't know if that was my, my, in regard to the property and Kelly question, that the contractor to come in. That's why I, so far, I don't know really what the idea behind that.
You said you, you said you spoke to the city attorney?
I had called the city attorney, yeah.
When? Who did you call the city attorney?
It was a day before I called you, before I called you.
Who did you call?
Tish.
She's not, she doesn't handle this?
Oh, she does.
Tish doesn't handle this, it's just, that's why I had a problem.
Okay. Because when I called and I called you, I mean, I called you the following day and you told me that, no, the attorney was not involved, that is what you told me.
Not when you decided in the council meeting that you would allow three or four representatives into your home. That wasn't, that wasn't the attorney's recommendation. The attorney's recommendation is that we get a warrant to enter your home to see if it's livable. That's the attorney's recommendation.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I don't know, because that's, that had changed from, I mean, the last meeting, what I had here, it was that, I mean, the attorney had asked that, I mean, the city to go in. And I had, I had accepted, I didn't refuse. The only things I may ask is just that, I mean, if they can give me time just to clean up, you know, anybody, I mean, when you want to go to their house, they can ask you having a time that's, okay, I want to clean my mess before you can come in. That is the only things I can ask. Because I never, I never refused that somebody, I mean, city official, people who works with utility to come there, I never refused that.
Appreciate the input. So, do you want to recap for us where we were at last meeting and then we're, so we're at the same place now, right?
Right. We're back to what Thor recommended.
Because it was just a suggestion by Denny last time. It wasn't, it wasn't an attorney or anything, it was just suggested before we did that.
Instead of going to the official act, it was to go look at it.
Let's see what we got.
Look at. Well, I would entertain a motion if somebody in the council wants to make a motion to move forward with the attorney's recommendation as another on our agenda.
Well, I'm going to make a motion, I think we should go ahead and check it out and go from there.
I'll second that.
And that's the only way we're going to know where we're at.
Because at this point, it's just irrigation, correct? That is there?
Right. That's the only way.
On the utility standpoint, it's just, it's an oral condition, just one of the requirements. Okay, any questions or discussion?
I just wish, I just wish there was a way that helped Malamba move forward with this project, but I don't know how we could accommodate that. I just hate to, first of all, I hate to see something like this happen. And second of all, I hate to see it get condemned and removed. You know, we're not, don't get me wrong, we're not at that point right now, but-
We're not today. I just think we've given them so many years already, you know, like, there has to be, there's got to be something that is going to happen.
Yep, I agree with that, also.
And we're just now are going to see where it's at.
Yeah. Yeah, because I don't want the, you know, that to happen either. I really don't, you know, that's not, we're sort of tensions, but say, take it away.
The purpose of this is just to see where we're at.
Right.
So, we can see and give you ideas where they think it should be. It's not that we're going to take it away.
Because that is one of the things, I mean, I was, I mean, you know, kind of, if I can use the word scared, is that, you know, because the city have all the power. And it just, I mean, to see that, I mean, that's a place being demolished and it's now an empty lot. And all the efforts, all the, I mean, everything that I put there, but if the city can help me in the way that, I mean, to give me ideas and also to give me, I mean, some time, that would be really well appreciated.
Because I'll try to give you a timeline on what repairs and stuff is what he's saying, what needs to get done.
So, basically, you're working with him to take this?
Yeah, just to see where we're at and see where, the city will see where you're at with your house. See what needs to be done and, yeah, we don't want to take your home away from you.
Right. But those timelines will definitely have to be enforced, though.
Yep, right.
We'll have to see. But we'll have you do it and go from there. I'll let you know.
There you go, there you go. We're going to roll call vote on this.
Carol Hancom?
Yes.
Nicole Jacobs?
Yes.
Jeanne O'Raugh?
Yes.
Steve Herring?
Aye.
Okay. We'll be in contact with you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, 11B. Same process on the property at 412 South Maple Street?
Right, yeah, and we have heard, we've heard nothing from the owners. Two sort of head others.
Is that the Gomez place?
Yeah.
So, I would entertain a motion to move forward with that property.
I'll make a motion to, to approve moving forward with the, sorry, the attorney's recommendation at 412 South Maple Street.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
I mean, do we have to, do we have to go this route and get a warrant to enter the house to see if it's livable or it is, is that something we need to do, is my question?
What else would you-
Think legally, too.
Otherwise, I think otherwise it just is the way it is right now.
Which is not very good.
Well, but how have we done it on other houses? Like going down by Zion and in the one that-
We were able to enter.
Well, they responded to us, where these people have not responded to us.
To anything.
Okay.
And they've had no utilities at all since the tour just of the home?
About 40 years.
Four years ago?
Yeah, the doors are off and windows are out and it's just a mess.
Yeah, I went by there this morning and I saw it out.
Yeah. How does that work, then, you know, later down the road, if there's a lien on, on the house?
Thor will have to take this through.
Yeah, because you will have to look at it. And he will, he'll go out, he'll see it when he pulls it out.
Any other questions or discussion?
So, the, so Thor would have to contact these people somehow?
There was, there's a couple residents that have shown interest in the lot, too.
Which shouldn't mean anything yet at this point, because it's owned by somebody, you have to work through that process first.
Yep. So, I think, yeah, once we get the search warrant, maybe figure out something.
All right, council, your vote. Roll call, please.
Steve Herring?
Aye.
Jeanne O'Raugh?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Carol Hancom?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item number 12 was a rate study by MRES, good information in the packet. I would entertain a motion to approve, and we have opportunity to discuss it.
I'll make a motion. You go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the MRES conduct of rates, conduct of rate study.
I'll second.
All right, discussion. So, the cost in there, they pay half, we pay half, $9,000 of our electric fund.
Does this usual, Kelly, that they do it every so many years, or we're requesting this ourselves, or are they telling us?
Well, we requested it.
We requested it, didn't we? Okay.
It was a little while ago that we talked, we had talked about that.
Well, before we increased rates, we wanted one then, but it wasn't a handful of times, so we did just a quick overview. Now, this will be an actual rate study.
Which we'll get to see.
Any other questions or discussion? Are you now ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye. All carried. All right, item number 13, business sign, consider approval of Steve Hartong's sign permit on city property. Do you want to clarify with a little bit the difference between this and a variance on a private property because of the public property?
Right, I did reach out to Darren Premgar, and he, he explained it well.
He always is good.
Yeah. He's good. He said, since the city owns it, the city can decide whether or not the sign can be erected. If the city didn't own it, then it would need to go to the Board of Adjustments for a variance.
And wasn't there a one step, so if the city would approve it, it still would go to the Board of Adjustment if it isn't in compliance with our signed variances?
He said, if the council agrees, a private sign may be placed on city property, then it will be up to the Board of Adjustments to determine the fate of the variance request. It's like, it's still saying no. If a variance is needed, it's just, there's one place he said that's where it would end.
I think if-
If the Board of Adjustments said no.
Or if the city says no.
Or the city said no, that's where it would end.
If the city chose not to allow it on public property.
Then it would not need to go to the Board of Adjustments.
Which currently in our ordinances, people can't put up signs on public property.
Personal signs.
They cannot?
They cannot. Okay.
But now, Steve, he wants it more with a personal sign.
He wants it for, yeah.
His, for his own business.
Personal business. I think that sign you had out-
Yeah.
For the last eight, for the first eight years I was here, whatever it was.
Yes. It was on the end there.
And then he had one of his-
My question is, when that was moved?
Are there going to be more people that want to put up a sign?
Well, that's what he said in the last, and I highlighted that, the last sentence, it also can be a slippery slope to allow one business to place a sign on city property, and in the future, another business may want to do the same.
Yeah, right.
And you tell them, no precedents have been set.
Okay, so what would be wrong with putting in like a general sign that says Business District, and then maybe hanging little signs below that?
So, this is what Premgar has.
Okay, but like, maybe hanging little signs below that, if like Steve Hartong wanted to put a little plaque there?
And maybe the-
Maybe grocery store, hardware store.
I don't know. We'd have to get the DOT, I think, involved in that part.
Really?
Wouldn't that, is that kind of how that would be? If it's on a DOT sign like that, I don't think it can be-
Probably not.
I think it's can be further in.
Yep.
It would have to be a little separate.
But even if, we don't have a business district sign.
No, we don't, we really don't.
So, something that we could get would be able to show, you know, like you had said, there's one a block before, a block after in Premgar.
Doing something like that would be able to direct-
You go through Archer and they even have a business district sign.
Yeah. Oh, my. And we don't. We have nothing.
And you know, the city sign we have there, it could be a city, it could be a city-owned sign, but then we could just have the businesses, if they wanted to sponsor their business, we could add that to the city-owned sign. Would that, would that work?
I think he's wanting to like, display what he has, though.
Yeah.
You know, specials, and I think on the city sign, I don't really think that would be the best that they have.
I mean, if we ever get to the point where we'd have a city informational sign where along the highway, let's say, where businesses could advertise a message.
Right, yeah.
I was just trying to figure out some common ground here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea of a lot before, you know.
It's something, yes.
And on that subject, how does that work? Allow garage sale signs and everything along the boulevard?
What?
Garage sale signs.
And we currently don't allow that, right?
There's, oh, they do, yes.
So, we should poll those when we see them, when you guys are driving around. They can be on private property.
If they've asked. But not on, like, the boulevard, they could be on-
I don't think they could be on the street, I don't think they could be on the street right of way or public property. They could be on, they could be inside the sidewalk, not outside the sidewalk.
You know, but it, back to my idea for a city sign, you know, it wouldn't be something that you would change regularly, it would just be a list of the businesses that we have in our, in our town. You know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have them post sales or any special thing, just a list of the businesses of people when they come into our city, they know that that business is downtown.
And maybe if we can get them to turn down main with, you know, business district this way, maybe like on the back of that, the sign we have on the end of the boulevard, or you know, you could have something on the back there, the businesses we have, or something like that.
It's going to take a little thought.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think there needs to be some thinking on this.
To your point, Steve, we'd have to figure out what sign that would be, how that would be configured, which would be, or what they think to take a look at, it would help our businesses downtown.
And then that would alleviate the problem of setting a precedence.
Right.
I mean, if you, I mean, we can, we can approve a sign permit on a case by case, but once you start, then there's going to be more people that feel a lot of to it.
That's why I think the business district would be good.
Just for right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think the business district first and then maybe get some more ideas.
Yeah.
Just get a simple on first and kind of go, because we don't, like you said, have.
I mean, I'd like to help every business in this town.
Right, yeah, not just one or two. Yeah, right.
Absolutely, whatever we can do to help.
Right.
Okay, so action on Steve's request, either approve or deny that request.
I would say deny. I'll make, yeah, sorry. I'll make a motion to deny the sign permit on city property for Steve Hartong at this point.
What, I'm sorry?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I think with doing this, that we should really consider looking forward for doing something to help the businesses.
Right.
Help all the businesses to advertise what they have.
So, is that something that we as a council could request? The chamber? That doesn't represent all businesses, but it represents a lot of the businesses.
You can.
Come on, I'm just trying to think about it. How would we as a council, what would our process be to come up with a recommendation?
Is there a committee that's a poll under, streets or?
Yeah. All right, my minder. The only thing with chamber is, you know, there, there's a membership, you know, and I don't-
Sure.
Maybe some of them, some businesses don't want to pay that membership, but, you know.
If it fell under committee, it'd probably be under finance and economic development. That's Denny and Cole.
That's the way I'm used to it now.
So, we could start there.
Okay, sure.
Get some ideas on-
Then we can all help, you know. That's right. Ideas, or even by going through, like you said, you will go through towns and see what That's right, even by going through, like you said, you will go through towns, see what you see. Like you said, even Archer has a business sign, and so we just need, I mean, a lot of times outside of town, they'll say the churches.
Yeah, and we did have that on the old one, we had the churches. On the green and white sign, but that's been a while.
I did notice, Sheldon used to always list the churches, now they just say, we have something, I don't know if it's varied, but there's about a word, says something about churches, but they're not listed as separate. So there's, I can't tell you what it said, but I did notice that a while back, because I thought, huh, they're not listing them anymore.
So the history of our current sign there that replaced the former one that had some of that information on it, that was done because the old one was needing to be replaced, we weren't in town when that happened?
Marloeville family donated that money.
For that.
For that sign.
They did the whole sign, didn't they?
They did the whole sign.
Right, that's what I thought happened, but I wasn't definite, I didn't look back. But I do like.
And that was a Chamber project, wasn't it?
Yep.
They gave you guys some money.
Yep, Chamber was working, they were working with Barb and the family.
Because I even wondered if we took down the Hellstrom sign, if that would look nice just on the front of that Boulevard, if we could move the Marloeville one. But it says Welcome On, so then that looks like we're backwards.
Okay, that's a separate topic, so Michelle, would you make a note on future council meeting, put a business signage, et cetera? And if you could give some thought to that, and maybe run it by some of your Chamber members, because their business, some of their businesses, if we can act on that. So back to this one, we have a motion and a second to, was it deny or not approve?
Deny, yep.
To deny the sign permit. Any other discussion?
And will Steve get ahold of you then? Because I think just like an explanation on this, though, like it's not, it's not like we're saying no, like a hard no, it's just that.
Show them. Okay, you telling that, we're still looking into it, but we just can't put one person on it at this point, I mean, we never.
And trying to think of some more inclusive ideas.
If you have some ideas on how to include more people or whatever, other than just all their names, maybe that would help.
Okay, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say aye. Okay, item number fourteen, billing software, shit.
Okay. As you know, we have problems with G-Works, and if you watch the Net, which I do, so do many, many, many others. Tyler is used by Orange City, Sioux Center, Rock Valley, and it's also used by the courthouse.
But have they been out a while? Courthouse forever?
And MRA strongly backs Tyler, and MRA has a person that does support right there, and she's, from what I heard, she's very good. If it's anything that's above her knowledge, then you go to, you know, a cyber tech, but it is a little more than G-Works, we were locked in at thirteen thousand for G-Works, this is going to run about nineteen, twenty, but G-Works is going to go up.
Right, because you said they're doing that cloud thing and all that.
Well, have you even gotten, you had a couple of them, you said a while back, that were, you had your tickets in, and you still, had they ever gotten back on a couple of those?
No, and actually, they got back to me on one, and I was like, what? I couldn't even call her in, and it was two weeks prior, and somebody else had called me back.
They're not even keeping track of their stuff. Well, I don't think you can stay with that, absolutely.
It's, the startup cost is high, but they are willing to split that up.
So would everything?
Around, you know, into two fiscal years.
Oh, okay.
And a lot of that cost is, that initial cost is training.
Oh, and they'll actually come and train, here. Yes, it is.
And it's, it's all going to be based on how quickly Alana and I learn it, the quicker you learn it, less time, so there's less cost.
So did you find out, is it compatible with?
It is compatible with that one.
And then to also say now you would be able to do when they give you their credit cards and stuff?
It'll have online credit, online bill pay, we won't have this credit card machine anymore, it's all taken care of through them, so we don't have to worry about the credit card fees and any of that.
Well, they've got some pluses. And just having, knowing other towns are liking it.
And you're the one that has to do this, so your recommendation, you're, you know, in on this is.
Well, and Marine's been helping, but if she knows it, then you're going to also have a bigger plus.
And she said the cost that we're paying is nothing compared to the cost of the courthouse.
I'm sure.
I'm sure, that's true.
Well, they have a few more users.
Yeah. And it's, and it's also user-based, so like I would have certain credentials, and Alana would have certain ones, you know, so like right now, everything's done through me, so if you look, every entry is done by me, and it's not.
And you need to have some of that here, please.
Well, just, just in case, though, I mean, you should have what Alana puts, what you put, you should have those data entries.
Yes, right, and you do need to be backups, but.
I will say, the whole time I've been here, like city clerk wise, nobody's ever been like, yay, G-Works.
I haven't heard any until now, in years.
Nail in the coffin then.
Yeah, I haven't heard anybody say that.
Why can't you see all the tickets that Sandy had put in, or Whitney, and they're all still there.
Oh my gosh.
I mean, they've, they've been handled, but you have to.
Why would you delete them?
Yeah, and they're, and they're all the same, you know, basically the same issue.
So the data would transfer into this?
Yeah.
Easily?
Well, it'd take some time.
It's a big task.
Did you say that Premgar does this too?
Premgar's, what, with G-Works Cloud?
Oh, they did, okay. I just know that they were having some issues with like their, their billing.
G-Works Cloud.
Okay, okay.
That's why you don't want to go there. She doesn't want to hear about a cloud. No, I think we've got to move with it.
So this was the motion before, so could you clarify for people, go to a page, and just so everybody knows.
Yeah. Page forty-three is what I'm showing. It's on like page forty-three.
Forty-three, you're showing your total.
Summing costs. Yeah, so like.
Okay.
Yeah, your one-time fee, so your startup cost, is that fifty-one?
Yep.
Yep.
And how soon will they kind of get started, or don't you know yet?
It would take some months.
Okay, but you need to have it done by the first of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So probably the sooner the better.
Yep.
Let's get going.
And you said that, sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
That services that you have on the one-time fee, that can be split up into?
Right.
Two?
Two fiscal years.
Will you, will you pull like, or divide that into how many different, so it's not just in one, it's going to be in multiple?
Yeah, just general, it'll be through all the different.
So do we have an agreement with G-Works that limits us for timing on it, or?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to switch us over to cloud after the first year. We're not under anything that.
Contract to switch to the cloud. And do you pay them six months, or do you pay yearly fee?
Paying for this calendar.
So will you get anything back, or don't you know? Oh, come on. I'd ask.
They'll probably take us close to the end of the year to be ready to shut it off.
Like input of all, you know, individual accounts, people accounts, do you have to do that manually, or can they roll that over?
All that information should roll over.
Good.
That would be.
That's what's going to take, that's what's going to take.
Right. Roll over and check it all.
Yeah, make sure it's good. Well, and if they're here, that's going to be a plus too, I would think.
Yeah.
So the funding for this?
That's what we were talking about, it's divided amongst the comparative funds and then the general, so it'd be divided by.
Electric, water, general. Water, general.
And they'll pay half of the fifty-one. Startup.
Recurring fees get split up the same way.
We can afford it, I'm asking.
Yeah, that's a little bit of a question.
But you've kind of been looking into this for a while, so you have that in the back of your mind, that that's what you're wanting.
You never did go over to Orange City though, or anything, did you?
No, I talked to her on the phone, they had for a long time, I mean, oh, it was more than a decade, I just think.
Really? That long?
Yeah.
So it's not just a new thing within the last couple of years? Okay, that's a plus too.
I love to talk on clerk end, is that G-Works, when they used to be, Data Tech was good. And then they bought out all these other companies, and they made this big G-Works, the Simple City, and that's, and there's not enough tech support to handle the number of clients they have.
Basically.
And then the turnover side.
So then it's a motion?
I'll make a motion. And move forward with Tyler Technologies as our billing software.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say aye. Get ready, Michelle.
So will anybody, sorry, to go back, will anybody else need to, like, will we need to help you somehow?
I'm not sure how it'll all work out, we'll.
I was going to say too, if you need, guys need to be, maybe we can try to watch the office. I know you're going to be there, but we can maybe take your traffic and stuff.
Hopefully Tyler's done enough of these installs and from G-Works, that they can lead us through our best.
Or I'm just saying, like, if any of us needed to be, like, in the training, just for some of the simple, simple things, just in case.
Kelly, do you guys?
Yeah.
Well, and Kelly will be.
Learning too.
All right.
Yay, Tyler.
All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda, banner. Michelle?
Michelle Song has asked that we approve the senior banners on Main Street again. We had some issues last year, because the banner size changed, so Kelly had to modify a lot of the holders, and they were chasing banners.
Last year, we just, the bands that were on there, we just loosened, lowered them, and then tightened them back up, but they.
They didn't all stay good.
They were kind of messed up after we loosened them up, so when we took them down last year, we just took everything down. So if we want to do this again, we're going to have to get new banding and start from scratch.
And, you know, it may be too late, if, if we decide to something different, it may be too late to do, to decide this year. I'm not sure if Michelle already has the banners printed, but the school has nothing to do with this, they want nothing to do with it, we still had banners here last year.
Whose IU was it to begin with? Way back when, was it John?
This was COVID.
COVID, yeah.
They did it for COVID.
But then, didn't that start from the school?
I think.
Yeah? With, with Michelle, that she would do them, get them for them, but I thought I did too, I thought the school was starting.
Yeah, that was one's.
And this is their second or third year, they want nothing to do with it. So how, what kind of an expense will this be if you have to get that?
I mean, it would just be the banding, and I mean, the time to put them up.
Right.
And I don't know if it's last year or the last two years, Premgar did come down and help us.
And Rich probably would come too.
But we don't pay for the banners?
No.
Just parents too?
Parents too, okay. And then the parents are responsible to come here, after Kelly takes them down and pick them up, and.
And most of them, except you had what, seven or eight?
Yeah, they're still in my car.
You'll get them there.
You're their mom now.
Yeah, I even, I even took some home with me and delivered them to the ones I knew that were picking up.
And if I see people, I told them too, they're here.
I wonder if we could give them back to Michelle, though. So she's the one that is kind of, you know, facilitating this, and then could we give them back to her, and then she could, or?
Getting rid of banners.
She's kept getting the ones I don't.
But that's not the time considered problem, the cost, you know, that's just a nuisance.
Yeah.
But do we want our city workers to go through, spend the time to reinstall top and bottom brackets, four thirty-eight banners?
How long does that take?
Takes a while.
It will take.
Well, I wonder, should we get ahold of Michelle and ask her about, she's got all these parents' names, because she's ordered them all. Do the parents just want to use them at their home for their graduation? I mean, that, they get, I've seen some of them, you know, would they like to have something of their child picture or whatever for their party, wherever they have it? Would they consider just, they paid for them, the parents did, so would they just take them and use them at their home, or wherever their graduation party is?
They can do whatever they want.
Right, right. And that would say.
Are they ordered already?
I'm sure they are.
Probably. But I don't think they would be down in time for graduation, because it's going to be through graduation.
Yeah, they are through.
This would.
Oh, scratch putting, okay, okay, I get what you're saying.
Give it to the parents.
Okay.
You don't even put them up.
You say, we're not going to, we're not going to put them up anymore.
Because of the fact that he had to mess with the street poles and.
Well, we don't even have to, I mean, we don't, if we decide, we don't have to give them.
I know, but it's kind of nice to give them a reason why, because it did look nice.
I do, I do like it, I think it's neat, but it's going to cost us.
It is, it's costing us time and money.
You have to incur some expense.
But, and if we are getting new street poles, maybe, I don't know how soon we can jump into that.
The new street poles have grooves in them that you can, I mean, you can put whatever you want on those poles and.
Just go by.
So it's easier then?
Just by brackets. But I don't know if that's all going to move that fast. But we do it even in the street, I see.
I think we should talk to her about that. If being it's going to cost you guys money first to get the banding, then the time, if this year, at least this year, let the parents take them to their homes.
If Premgar came and helped, it'd probably be, I'd say, a dota day to give.
It'd be a longer last year than that.
And then Sutherland, would they help then too?
Sorry, one guy.
Yeah, that's true.
We got Rich and, you know, I mean.
So, so this is on the agenda, because they, because Michelle contacted you to get approval to put them up. So that, that's kind of what we're, what you as a council are going to act on, you see, could either say, yeah, it's approved, or no, it's not approved, we're not putting them up. And then throw up the other idea.
I would like to, yes, I think we should.
I mean, we've got all sorts of good ideas, but we're, we have that one thing to act on, you know, at this point.
But we don't have to make a motion or anything, or what?
We do. Consider approval, so it'd be a motion.
So can we approve it, or we're just considering it tonight?
Well, we're either, I would, I would say you're going to either approve it, or.
How about we table and you talk to her?
If we don't do it.
Why don't we table and you talk to her?
Then graduation is going to be over.
We don't think we can.
Because May fifteenth is graduation, seventeenth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay.
But May fifth is the next.
Yeah, we can, we've got to act on it today.
I think we'd have time. Because we're going to, when's our next meeting?
May fifth.
Okay, and then we can decide, because you won't put them up right before May anyhow.
But they, if we don't approve it, then they.
Then they've already got.
Probably won't order them.
Oh, I think she's got them all done, ordered, I'll bet you money, I don't remember what she told me a couple of weeks ago. She came and ended the bill at the office. I can't believe those aren't ordered.
I don't know.
What do you want to do, council?
I'm not. I don't think.
It's nice, but it's going to cost us.
I just feel we should table and ask her.
I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion to not approve the.
To do what?
Request to do.
Okay, your motion, Steve, was?
To not approve the request to do the banners.
Not approve banners, that's a motion to have a second, still time to discuss that.
I'll second you. To not approve, and hopefully, we can do, I'll find out if she's got them.
I mean, it's a lot of effort for the guys to put them up. Last year, last year, the banners came in a lot larger than they were originally. A lot of them blew off, some of the brackets broke.
So regardless, we probably have to fix a bunch of it anyhow, even if you went to pull the stuff off.
Well, we just have to replace the bands, I mean, the. Well, we just have to replace the bands, I mean, the... Yeah. The piece that holds the bar in and the bars, they're, I mean, they're all fine. It'd be just rebanding it all.
And then how much would that be? Just as to, you know?
For all of them?
She's what?
She says she has not ordered them. I had them ready to go, but was waiting on your meeting. After talking with Jean, I went ahead and got them ready. They are not ordered.
So, ask her what she thinks about giving to the parents instead of hanging them.
She hasn't ordered them.
She what?
She hasn't ordered them. So it just wouldn't be ordered at all?
I know, but ask her if she would order them.
That's something else.
Does that influence whether we hang them or not?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, leave them go and then...
No bearing on what we're voting on.
Alright, any other discussion? Call vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Now, this, this is in favor of not approving the banners. All in favor of not approving the banners, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say aye? Carry. Okay. Even so, follow the thread. Alright, item number 16, street bids, review street bids. Page forty-four and later?
Got two bids there, I mean, usually whenever I do street bids, I put it all on there and they itemize it out so you can pick and choose what you wanna do and not wanna do, and how much we wanna spend, and then we can figure out, you know, if you say we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on street repairs, then we pick and choose the hundred thousand dollars. I will say, uh, what is it? Three twenty-one, the first one there? That one there would be, that's sent back to the homeowner, because that is where Candy and Paul redid their sewer.
Oh, sorry, item number one, that twenty-three.
Just the three twenty-one?
So that, that was generated from the early Candy side versus the house on the other side?
Paul started, Paul did issue, and then Candy, since the road was...
He's using Candy and Paul.
Paul's on the west side and Candy's on the east side of the road.
But they pay for that.
They'll pay for that.
And that's...
A lot of times these guys just like, get to go for us, just they don't have to do separate billing.
Right.
What does, let's see. Those two say four inch mill and fill asphalt patch.
That is taking, taking milling everything out and then putting four inches of asphalt back in.
And a lot of the later ones say one inch HMA double. What does that mean?
That is pretty much, love, I mean, they, a lot like they did with...
This downtown, Home Street, Broadway? Okay, so that's kind of the, it's like a little slurry filler or something like that. So this is on here, just to review this tonight, not to act on it?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanna go around and look at what I have on here and maybe decide what's most important to you. The blacktop does have, they have limestone chip seal and they have quartzite. Quartzite is the, the red stuff and the limestone would be white.
How much of that red stuff do you have? We'll have to give them.
We have quite a bit of it.
Now, you used to get a bid from Fuller's once in a while. Did you decide?
Fuller's mostly do, they really don't do like the chip seal, they'll do, I mean, they would love to do, you know, Wood Street if we did that, and...
Oh, okay.
But they really don't do the chip seal part of it.
So then all of this would be roads like this then? Like the...
Yeah.
The rock stuff?
I mean, except for, you know, like parking at Swanson, that would just be asphalt. Like the two nineteen, that would just, they would just mill that out and put the asphalt patch in there, so that would just be black without the rock on it.
So the, so the Swanson parking, is that to expand, extend parking, or?
That would take the parking from where it is now, unlike the south side, it would take it all the way down to pretty much a stop sign and then a few spots by where the buses park.
So down to the stop sign on Maple Street that way, or?
It'd be on Swanson down to Maple.
Swanson.
Yeah. From where the parking stops now, it would just extend down. And we would have, the city would have to do a little bit of dirt work to make that feasible. There's that oil there, we'd have to dig that back some.
And then would you have to tile then, or with that drainage?
It should just follow down the asphalt over the corner. I mean, just have a heavy rain and test out your drainage on the west side.
I mean, we've had a couple rains there and nothing's fixed up, so I think, yeah, I would, yeah. It would be nice to see when that, we do get a nice rain and how that worked out.
That from rectors that you dug up?
Yeah.
Okay. Do they all, they must all do that chip seal, huh? I just don't like it.
And I do think the, like, the ball field parking, I think the, I talked to Wade, and I think, I think he said he'd be willing to go halves on that.
Which one was that?
The number, well, it's number three on the blacktop, and yeah, the Swanson ball field parking, four inch asphalt. It's number...
Number three on back excavating.
Number three on both of them.
Okay, on both of them?
Do you know what the total of blacktop service is? At Swanson Street, there, well, that's eleven. So blacktop, just on that Swanson part, it is eleven eight seventy-five versus seventeen. Blacktop on, let's see, on the, basically, let's see, the street North Main from Swanson, which is east. Twenty-nine versus thirty-five.
Michelle or Alana could just, you know, maybe break it down, like, put, you know, something where it's just like, one, the options, two, the options, you know, like, four has three options for it. Maybe we could just put the, you know?
Sure, something that's easy to look at.
Easy to look at for you guys.
So, funding, as we're looking at these areas, is, is there a, a standard amount that we put in the budget each year that would cover part of this, obviously won't cover all of this?
We have our road use tax.
Which is how much?
I think it's a hundred and thirty.
And does, does our road use tax give us for anything else in particular, or do we typically apply that?
Anything that we use on our streets.
But we're planning on doing some alley approaches yet this year, which would be out of this current budget. So, I mean, like alley approaches, street repairs.
So could you give us, you know?
What you definitely need done?
What you definitely need done, and maybe a recommendation to say, you know, of our road use tax, we wanna apply some of it to those other projects. Some of it would be available for this, but, but how much that the council could be looking at, saying, it's like, okay, which, which of these things do we really wanna do before we can figure out additional funding, bonding? Because the big one, of course, is something as Wood Street.
Right, I'd love to see some of that done. At least the asphalt.
And once the asphalt's done, that's pretty much anything that's ever gonna get done for a long time.
I think so.
Because you have to do that and then redo it differently. Okay, so if you could, get the council some recap info?
Maybe do a comparison so we can see, because it looks like they are quite a bit cheaper than that.
Well, some of the ones I circled, which I think you definitely do, is three twenty-one South Clark and the two nineteen South Clark. I circled those. Two nineteen, I would be very thankful if you did that one. Yeah. And then the Swanson ball field, four inch parking asphalt, if this, if the school is gonna pay for half, our half would be about eighty-five hundred, so I circled that one.
Well, there's two of them though.
That's from...
That's North Main.
Okay, so they only have the seventeen, huh?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, keep busy.
And then, uh, the other one I saw was number seven, West Green Street, South Main to South Rutledge. That's just one block, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the next one is, goes from Main to Maple, somewhere in there. There's West Green to West Girls Back, that's on Rutledge Street. West Bertha Street, Rutledge to Maple, is that the one you were talking about? Bertha?
That'd be from, basically, like, Paulson's.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of Girls Back, sorry. Girls Back, I think it's on there to go from, oh, well, from Rutledge to Main and then from Main to Maple.
So five and six.
And that one does... Yep. Needs some help. Yep, that one does. So five and six.
Girls Back does.
So one, two, and three, five, six, and seven. That's my thoughts.
So think about that, get out and look at streets before next meeting.
Have you ever ran Beck Dooters, anything for you for streets?
Beck Dooters, yeah.
Beck Street this? Oh, I thought it was Blacktop. Oh, okay.
And, and then before we, before we get, we do, I mean, if we did Wood Street, then you would want to do one block of Girls Back and one block of Broadway. So... That, I think that's in there somewhere. Yep, but that's all together with...
With wood.
With wood.
Number ten?
I think. So, I mean, you could, you could reduce the expense on it by just doing those two blocks for now, and then doing Wood Street.
Street by itself.
By itself the following year.
Looks like, is it, is that all in Tim? East Day Street to... Look at. One of the things that I would encourage you to consider is, on page forty-five, the backside of Beck Excavating, the sweep and clean prior to chipping, which they did, but this one says that they'll sweep excess rock three to four weeks after for thirty-eight hundred. I think, you know, we're almost a year out and we're still dealing with rock. It'd be interesting for you to talk to them, it's like, how thorough of a job is that really? But it'd be nice not to have to keep dealing with rock for a long time.
Because that is the major complaint.
So that's why I'm wondering, would, did Blacktop do a better job for you?
Nobody, I don't think, since I've been here, nobody's cleaned up for us.
Really? I don't remember as much though in Blacktop, I do think, as we did this past year. There was a lot.
What did you do by our house?
I know there's one year with Blacktop that it was...
Because we still have it in our yard.
Well, that's when Jean, your neighbor, broke the pocket in. And that was Blacktop, I do remember that, because we had some too, but it, it basically was on the city side and it sunk into the dirt. We never, I thought it was gonna rake it, and I never did.
Because you didn't have a curb there, so... So how did it sink, well, you mean it got knocked on?
Flew into the grass like everybody's.
Okay, so that'll be a discussion item for another meeting.
Sounds good.
Item number seventeen, grant updates. It's here, this is...
So we did the Auburn County Foundation grant, but we were just gonna approve it today for that. That is for the new city electronic sign that, that we ended up having a few bids on. Kelly got one and I had one. So I submitted that one, the total cost would be twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Twenty-eight thousand. Twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. And then the grant foundation amount is fifteen thousand. Michelle also, remember that there was a matching grant through MRES, so that was five thousand, and that's a guarantee. Basically, once we, we do this project, then we send in the receipt and they will refund us that five thousand, so we would, we would have to be responsible for the other five thousand. And then we have the balance of three thousand, seven hundred dollars that I, I just put city inputs, donations, and/or other grants that we can look into. There is a poet grant that is going to be closing here, I think, the end of this month, or, sorry, the middle of May. And there is also a couple other ones that, that we could go for that are very minor, you know, twenty-five hundred, but it's still something. And also, I don't know for sure if, we talked about getting donations at one point, I think that was last year, if that would be something, but it's thirty-seven hundred dollars, so I don't think that's too, too big of an amount that we would have to cover.
Sure. So you had said to make up that, so the grant was fifteen, the Auburn County Foundation grant, MRES was five, wasn't that a matching?
Yes.
So the city would have to come up with five?
Yeah. And they would have nine.
So that would be eight?
Yeah.
City would be responsible for like eight if we did?
Yeah.
Eighty-seven hundred.
If, yes, eighty-seven fifty, or eighty-seven hundred, unless we were gonna take that thirty-seven hundred and go for another grant or something else, donations or anything like that. This isn't gonna happen right now, you know, hopefully we'll be able to get awarded this grant. But there's still time that we could go and ask for donations, or if people hear about that, I'm sure they would be willing to do that. So that one was submitted. Then we also have the poet grant that I was just talking about. We had talked about doing, this was last year as well, the dogway stations, because it's just, I think it's getting to be pretty important at our city parks and, and everything else. I did do a quote for two different types of, of dog stations. One of, and I just did four of them. Four of them with just a, here, there's, I only did a few of them. I'm gonna share this one. If you look at the, kind of the wooden one, four of those, that is with the, the waste bags, the receptacle liner, the plastic post, recycled plastic post, the waste receptacle dispenser inside, four of those would be four thousand, forty-eight dollars. And then on the backside, a metal one, which the receptacle is smaller, but all of those, same as what we, what the other one was quoted, that was two thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. The poet grant, I think, has a max of four thousand for that. I was looking at some of the past, uh, people that were awarded that, and I think a couple of them were like twenty-five hundred dollars, so I'm not for sure if they do give that max of a four thousand, but at least we have some options. And then once, you know, if I get approval... And then once, you know, if I get approval to put in that grant, we can give them both of these.
And where would these four be recommended to be positioned, all at the park, various places or?
No, various places. I think there's a lot of people, you know, right by my office there, I see a lot of people walking their dogs, the Pocket Park is one that I see a lot of, a lot of dog poo. And then also the park, I think maybe one of them there, also the trailhead of the walking path, something there and maybe, I don't know, closer to, closer to the bridge there. Because, I mean, dogs don't just go to the bathroom right away, you know? It's throughout.
One over there by the lake or kind of.
Yeah, but then once, you know, I had talked to the lake too, they're going to be, or Bryan County Conservation, they're going to be getting their own, so then, you know, we don't have to do anything on that part.
Good. Good, nope, sounds good.
We do have a bench by, like the reservoir and Dollar General, maybe go over there.
Yeah.
So whose daily chore would this get added to to make sure, make sure there are bags and that the garbage is.
Well, then if he is mowing down there anyways.
Randy, I mean Randy, he takes care of the parks and downtown garbages and.
And he doesn't, he doesn't even mow on the path too?
He mows the path, so, yeah.
It seems like this one more expensive, but it's more conducive to just litter as well as.
The only thing that I saw, there could be a potential problem with that is the lid is not connected, which this one is connected on there, this one is just a free lid, so if for some reason, you know, wind, kids, whoever.
Yeah, and they'll put it back on. I like the size of it.
Yeah.
But.
I will say this one, I mean, these remind me of the ones we have downtown.
Probably.
And then you don't have bags in them and then you drop the pot. If it's that style, it would better have.
The other one?
This one.
Okay.
Just so they can get a bag, throw it in there and then you have a bag you can just take out.
Right, you got everything together. And I could look into this more, I guess I really did it before. If it doesn't have like a hinge or something, maybe that's something that we could think about doing, adding, so, I don't know.
I would think they'd have that option.
You would think so.
You ask them too if they have one.
It's not, it just, the way that it looks, it looks like it's just a hole off.
It does.
And I, I just, I think that's going to get lost or.
It might be too, you won't, you'll never find it again.
Okay, so our item B of, item, agenda item 17 is a motion to approve the Bryan County Foundation grant. A motion to approve that grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bryan County Foundation grant. I'll second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry.
I'll move to approve, moving forward with the poet grant.
Do a second.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry. All ayes. All right.
And there are quite a few other smaller grants, if there's anything else that we need to, need to do. It doesn't take long to get a quote or to look into this, I just think that there's a lot of missed opportunity for some of this stuff that could slowly try to improve our community.
That would be great.
Yeah. So if there's anything else, you know, Kelly, you probably are the one that sees it the most, but I'd be willing to do some of these smaller ones that I would, that I can do myself.
Well, one of the things that, not to throw out all kinds of ideas, but I know that they want to do some remodel of the dugouts at the city ball fields because that's, it's short, you can't stand up in there.
Yep.
That's a grant availability type of thing, so I'd be getting hold of somebody.
Yeah, there would be.
That'd be great. All right, item 18, reports, Kelly and Michelle.
I really don't.
We do have, one feeder hooked up to the new switchgear so far. I think most of the switching we're going to try and do, I know we're going to have one outage for, to switch one of them over, but I think we're going to try and do that during Nipsey's outage, so utilize that. We have been doing a lot of electric work, getting that stuff ready. Got the sweeper out, we've got some potholes fixed. We did have the guy come with the boat and sonar our lagoons. We should have the results back from that in a couple weeks, I think. See how much sludge and what now we got, we have in there. We got the.
Have they ever come back to you, King, on the rest of the sledge?
That's still in, a long time.
It's still in the works.
It's still in works.
Okay. When you think of it again.
Today we got the concession stand shingled, there was a corner of that that was all rounded out and shout out to Sweeney's, I had him look at it just to see how much we'd need and he ended up donating the shingles and mostly what we needed, so nice.
Yeah.
We send them a thank you.
Maybe I was just going to say maybe you'd like, you guys.
We're going to be working on getting the new transformer put in at the school pretty soon here. And I've had a lot of people ask me about the walkpath under the bridge. I did some looking and I looked at some marine salvage, they're called marine salvage bags. They're honestly meant to like get like boats or whatever from the bottom to float them up, but they can handle anywhere from 500 to, I think it can go up to like 15,000 pounds. So I don't know if that's something, and they're not very expensive, so I don't know if that's something we want to get some of those airbags and we could just support that.
What's the status of, it wasn't the state going to do either?
I mean, they're supposed to be coming this year sometime, but we got, we have people that want to do 5Ks and we have people that, I mean, there's a lot of people that use that bike path, who want to use that bike path, and I think some of them are currently using that bike path.
I'm sure, they are.
You know, yeah.
Probably would, you know, I mean, probably be fine for you to take a look at, see what's what options are and get pricing and present.
And it would be something temporary, you think that, until they come to fix it permanent or?
Yeah, yeah. And they're, I mean, they're basically just.
Like inflatable.
They're just like inflatable airbags that can, you know, withstand so much.
They won't wash away though, they won't.
You blow, I'd get them so they fit in there snug and you blow them up so they'd be, support the walkway and.
Makes sense, we're going to be nice to use that path.
And I've talked to DOT and he says it's, the best answer he gives, it's supposed to be this year sometime, so.
Narrow it down a little bit.
Canoe electric feeder projects, it's like, so the black conduits that are coming up by some of the poles, like by the lens building and stuff like that, where?
Those weren't supposed to be there, so we're going to take those out.
Those what?
Those pipe weren't supposed to be there, but yeah.
If you go past the lens building on the corner, there's what, two inch, inch and a half?
Two inch.
A bunch of two inch black conduits coming up out of the ground, then I kept wondering when they were going to be buried and hooked up.
Yeah, we got, we got that switch all hooked up and got the vault taken out, so yeah, we'll probably do that in the next couple weeks, take that, take them conduit out, which shouldn't take long.
And what's the status of the sidewalk across the street from Egg State Off.
We still have to take more sidewalk out and that'll be another one where we're going to have to take maybe the second outage, we're going to try and get that one done.
Okay.
Because we got to get the southeast feeder and the other side of the elevator feeder into that switch, so.
Could you replace lights on the boulevard?
On Main?
Yes, they're so bright. I turned down, I was like, they changed the lights.
Except they're open top.
Oh, it looks great, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
So you just put new lights in?
No, looks very nice.
Okay. Anything else from you?
I went to court with Thor on a nuisance violation and they were given two more months. So, the telephone they got to do.
Although you'd have to put up a garden shed or some sort of privacy fence too, or if they don't have a garage.
Right.
And no fine.
Which will clean it up.
Yeah, and no fine.
So good.
Yeah, Thor, Thor thinks that 750 is better used in a, in a, something to fix the problem rather than to rip the rest of it.
So it's either a shed or a fence, so there probably needs to be a certain fence that they can use.
It's just a privacy fence, just.
Not like a chain link one that you.
No, it's a privacy fence.
It has to be that we can't see it.
Okay.
And that was two months for that?
Right.
And that was from what, Tuesday?
Yeah. No, we're getting, we're getting quite, getting quite a list of nuisances and it's very time consuming.
You said though you're going to try to send, because, you know, I even wonder sometimes what some of the other, I mean, some of the other towns have some crap too.
A lot of other towns, they, they don't have people out, they don't have people out seeking nuisance violations and things are complained and followed.
Yeah, a lot of times in the past, we've just dealt with stuff when somebody complains about it.
Or we've kind of been, well, usually we hear it from somebody, but.
A lot, used to want it was going to go to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of cities.
We said these nuisance.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, because maybe that would give you some, few different ideas.
Okay.
Well, and I'll have a comment, this gets to the next line, but this pertains to that. You know, I've spoke about this before, but with anonymous letters or anonymous complaints, there's nothing we can do with those because we don't know where they're from, we don't know how to help the person if they don't, if they don't sign it and put their name on it.
It's very frustrating for me if someone complains and I can't go talk to them at least trying to work it out and see, you know, what I can do or what.
Makes sense.
Right, and same way, I've had some people come to me and talk to me and I, I'm like, well, who told you that? Because let's talk to them, they won't tell me. So I don't know if somebody even did, I don't know the truth, I don't know if somebody even did say that.
Or if they're just saying it.
Or if they're singing.
That's their own.
Or if somebody sends a note or a letter anonymously, we can't help them.
No.
So, I mean, we can't, I mean, I care and I care about people if they have a problem or I'll help them solve it, but if they don't, if they do it anonymously, we can't help them solve the problem.
Okay. So. Okay, do you have anything else?
Well, on that subject, it's, it's hard for, it's, between the lead pipe survey and the nuisances, it's hard for me to teach Alana anything new because she has bombarded with this.
Yeah.
So she's, I mean, there's things I'd like to teach her so I can get more help, but.
Right. But I think sometimes you're going to have to just plain say, the rest of this stuff, the jobs here, we got to get, I mean, even if it's a nuisance, unless it's a horrible thing that has to be fixed for a, you know, for something, you'll have to let it, put it on the back burner and you'll have to tell her that also.
Well, when you guys bring the list in, you'll have to let her know which ones are priority then.
Well, I think it's just, that's just the ones that we've heard people from and, you know, she doesn't have to work on it daily.
Okay, anything else? I really don't have anything else. Any city council comments? Please, I'm going to move to adjournments. We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry. Pull your second.
I did.
All right, thanks everybody.